This will be the last of the harmonious water, won't it?
We'll have one more.
One more.
Because they're taking over July, but then I would expect they should still provide some kind of a report until it, the cell's completely gone through because we still own it even though they're gonna take over everything. So.
I'll have to, I'll check with them and make sure they still give us a report.
Board reports. I would still like that one to leave every week.
Okay, if you would, send them an email.
It'll be in time. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on the report, please? Any discussion on? Thoughts?
Just like Jason said, ability, man. May?
And he stayed at a new high and staying at that new high.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, court to consider approval of previous court minutes.
I make the motion, we approve previous courts.
All in favor? I apologize, Jeff. Welcome to the Commissioner's Court. First one. Court to discuss and consider an appropriate project scheduling staff.
Lonely, put them in coveards.
What else needs to be done?
Door handle, nobody holds for work.
Welcome to our world.
All right, court to consider accepting donations to county entities. There are a couple, we have one for the library. Senior Center. And forty thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Like we would accept the donations from library and senior citizens as presented.
I see.
All in favor? All right, court to consider approval of treasure as monthly report for May. And do you want to do the personnel information on the report?
We can do the present. One thing I wanted to highlight was that we have received a ninety percent change in our interest rate from our banks and investment funds, so.
That's on the good side, isn't it?
That's on the good side. Yeah. Earlier this year, we were in Texas, one of our investment funds. We were receiving a point oh nine six five interest rate in January. We are currently receiving a point eighty-one percent interest rate. Still not great, still not where we were several years ago, but some positive thoughts. So. That will help some of our interest income.
Yes, it will.
Any questions on that report? As far as personnel goes, another busy month of personnel changes. Bringing all the swimming pool employees, they hired about thirty pool employees. And so just dealing with that paperwork. And there was an increase in overtime, as you can see in the report. Do you have any questions?
All the precincts, those towers, they're pretty true.
Yes. I'm for the election.
Yeah. Okay, they'll take time down, so.
Yeah.
Sometimes it may benefit if it's managed and handled correctly. Thank you.
Most of it's stuff that favors monthly financial and personnel report.
I see.
All in favor? Court to conduct a public hearing to consider the modification of speed limits on the following county roads or portion thereof listed below. County Road eleven oh one, County Road eleven oh five, County Road forty-one thirty-one, and Camp Springs Road. These are, I guess I should start the time, ten oh seven, I know.
Seven?
Yes, ma'am. Terry wasn't able to make it this morning, but he did kind of give me a reasoning behind wanting to change these and what he's wanting to change it to. He's wanting to change them to fifty-five miles per hour, about two miles of County Road eleven oh one. And the others, I think he said eleven oh one is about two mile long. So he's wanting to change them to fifty-five because of the heavy truck traffic that's been there recently. He said that at one time you could go by, go down one of those roads and see maybe one vehicle, and now you see at least ten fifteen. As you go down those roads. And these trucks are traveling quite fast and he's, he's got some concerns. He's spoken to people that live in it, on those roads, and they were not opposed to the speeding of fifty-five.
This is just on eleven oh one, or these roads listed?
All four of those roads listed.
Oh, forty-one thirty-one, we can't take that, that's a cliche road, and it's a very rough road.
I think he's wanting to bring it down to fifty-five.
Don't need to be fifty-five. They would be accelerating right now, I believe, on our County Road or Cliche Road, I believe it's thirty-five or forty.
Forty, cliche, sixty, baby.
If we're going, anything on that needs to be below thirty, because it is a, it's a hilly, dangerous road.
Sure.
And so forty-one thirty-one does not make.
I'm sure he's not wanting to bring it up. Because that was, the concern was that they were too fast on those roads. So if that one is already below, then that, that would be, that's why he would want to keep it at, I would say. He's not wanting to come up on speed limits there.
You know, it's already below fifty-five.
Like I said, paved roads are sixty, and let's give fifty-five, we can do, but.
I thought they were.
What part of Camp Springs Road is county and what part is the state?
I think all of Camp Springs is county.
Because it's seventy, from the cemetery up to Ennis Creek, and the sign says seventy.
On State Road?
I guess that's the state part.
On State Road it is.
Yeah.
But county roads, the black tops are listed at sixty miles an hour.
So somewhere does it turn off to a county?
When it crosses Ennis Creek Road, it actually is a county. But biggest cliche road, if we, it's going to have to be worded that forty-one thirty-one, it's just my biggest concern. I don't know about eleven oh one or eleven oh five or Camp Springs, but forty-one thirty-one is a cliche road. It's a dangerous road at thirty miles an hour, because there are too many blind spots and hills on it. It's very narrow.
Will you want to lower it?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, my opinion is twenty to twenty-five.
No, hold it down to forty or fifty.
Yeah, exactly. But if we get it posted, at least, if it's posted, at least the troopers or deputies can enforce it that way.
If I'm not mistaken, thirty is as low as we can go, because Cavender is thirty. And I was gonna make it twenty-five, and I said we couldn't, we'll go thirty, if I remember that.
I was thinking it was forty and thirty in the, in the school zone or anything like that, but yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that he was believing that one was a paved road. I would hate, it's in his, that one is, that portion would be in his precinct, so I'm thinking that. I would hate to change that without his input there. Of course, I don't know.
Let's just make the motion to table this until Terry can be here to discuss it.
We can do that, that would be a good idea, because I, there's more information than, that I don't have. Are there any thoughts from the crowd, from the public on this before we close the public hearing? Yes, sir?
Okay, the Cliche Road, it might not be bad to have a dash cam, just the way going down that thirty miles an hour to get an idea of what it actually looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Or is it fifty?
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at ten twelve. And then when we'll go ahead and table this. Until Terry can get back. So skip modifying. All right, court to consider approval of out-of-state travel for the Skerrit County Extension Office. How are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
You're good, Rhonda. Rhonda has some exciting news.
You want me to start with what the kids did?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so last week, yes, last week, we took fourteen kids to state for a trip out of at Texas A&amp;M University, and that's an annual trip that we make. That is our state contest for all of our kids for qualifying events, that they place first or in some of the categories second, to get to go to that contest, and there's also invitational contests that they can compete in. So we took fourteen kids, participated, should have done my numbers. We had five contests, we participated on the first day. The second day, we actually participated in two contests with twelve kids, and then the last day, we ended participating in two contests. And they did very well the whole week and represented our county very well, we're very proud of our kids. We had a first-place photography judging team with the high individual in that contest. Also, another individual that I think was seventh or sixth overall in the contest. In food show, we had a second place placing individual in fourth place. And we had our first-ever robotics team down there that was supplied with a STEM grant that the kids applied for and got, so they built a robot and competed in that contest. Also, our first-ever livestock skill upon was that day. Fashion show, we had two kids competing in the fashion show that day, and then the next day, Wednesday, we moved on to our consumer decision-making contest, which is the first time we qualified to compete in that contest. We had an eighth-place high individual. And then we had two teams from Skerrit County competing in Food Challenge. And that was two of the four representing our District Two. We can take two, four from our district, but Skerrit County had two of the teams that placed first district and got to advance. So in that contest, they compete in four different categories, so our kids don't compete against each other. And we had a second-place team and we had a first-place team. And the first-place team went on to cook in the final Food Challenge round, which they take the first-place teams in the four categories, and they cook again. They wash dishes, cook again, present again. That team placed second overall in the contest. So that team will be representing Texas in the National Food Challenge Contest in October, and it's at the State Fair in Dallas is where that national contest is held. But in addition, since they placed second overall in the contest, they were invited to cook and compete in New Orleans, Louisiana, and it's the Great American Seafood Cook-Off. And this traditionally is a contest for chefs and restaurants to compete in, and it, it highlights seafood, Gulf Coast seafood. But they have a four-H edition contest, and so our team was invited to go compete in that. So that is August, they have to arrive August fifth in New Orleans, and they cook on August seventh. So we're looking, we've already committed to taking that team, they're beyond excited to cook in this contest, and very honored to get to go do this. So I, I was going to ask the court, I, I know that out-of-state travel is not in the allowance for us to attend, but I was gonna ask if y'all would consider us using our funds and our county budget to take these kids to compete in this contest. I, I, I have, I have an estimate of what it will cost, just estimate. We still don't have like a finalized itinerary, we just know we show up at noon on the fifth, so we'll have to, to take them. It's about a ten-and-a-half hour trip driving, so we'll have to leave on the fourth, and we should be back on the eighth. So four nights, five days, if, if, if the court would entertain, you know, a motion for us to use our county travel allowance. I did look at our budget, and it, after I put the numbers to it a little bit more due to the increase in fuel, we've used more of my FCS travel budget, just because of the gas increases. And due to additional duties I have on the state and district levels, I've traveled more throughout this year. I will be coming off some state-level responsibilities next year. But this is the first year where we'll actually overrun my travel budget. But it, it will create an overrun in my travel, and so I've got to crunch those numbers a little bit more because there's some unknowns for the rest of the year, but I just wanted to see if the court would consider using.
What is, what is your estimate of the cost?
The trip about seventeen hundred dollars, and that's for mileage reimbursement and meals and hotels to stay.
Yep, y'all do a fabulous job down there with them kids, and I wouldn't dare them work that hard enough to.
Absolutely, yeah.
Get to reap the rewards of doing so.
Yeah.
So I make the motion that we allow Rhonda to take the kids to New Orleans, and we'll beat the numbers when we get back.
I see.
All in favor? I have one request.
Thank you so much.
Lots of video.
Yes.
Oh, no, I, so yes, I don't, they, they're very strict. I don't know yet if I'm gonna get to email, watch them cook.
Oh, really?
They said if there's any interaction between the agent or parent and kids that is qualified. So I'm not sure yet if there's public viewing, but I hope there is, because I really want to see that. We got to watch them in their final round at Food Challenge cook, and didn't get to watch them in the first round that they allowed us to come in. But I really hope I get to witness that. And then in addition, I think there's like training and culinary classes and things like that, although there's, there's a lot of educational components to the contest, but I will get pictures in any form that's allowed.
How about recipes? How about recipes?
And recipes, well, yes, and they're formulating their recipe right now, so it's, it's a, it's a lot. It's preparation, it's a different contest than the challenge, but we'll, we'll be sharing that with y'all and.
When y'all cooked for us, it, it was so good, and the kids did such a good job.
Thank you so much. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Rhonda.
That gives them a work ethic, something we're dealing with nowadays that we don't have.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Court to consider accepting oath and bond of Skerrit County Precinct Board Commissioner Jeff Mitchell. What do y'all think should we do that?
I make a motion to accept oath and bond of Skerrit County Precinct Board Commissioner Jeff Mitchell.
All in favor? All right. You ready? Barely, but it's getting easier. Court to consider request from precinct four Jeff Commissioner, Commissioner Jeff Mitchell for purchasing these trucks. All right.
Well, I just have the need. Got many issues over there, but I need to pre-pickup to get a four-wheel drive pickup. The current pickup that's there, we go into the, that's approved, will go to the airport, them to move planes around with. I just need to be able to get access to my crews and down south of my roads that are in current condition there, especially if it rains.
Right. You said in the show the used truck?
Yes.
Which?
Have you looked at him to get a price?
Yes, I've already, yes, I found one that was two thousand eighteen model, seventeen thousand.
Well, the total started to seven ninety fifty-four, but the airport is going to do, there's a line-out transfer, to transfer fifteen thousand, which was the trade-in value of the truck that he did have. So the airport is going to do a line-out transfer for the fifteen thousand to Commissioner Court Precinct Four, Commissioner Court Line. So it'll be the difference of that, and we'd have to pay the whole thirty-two, but he's actually out of his budget only paying the difference of the thirty-two, seven ninety minus the fifteen.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve this, uh, precinct four commissioners' request for the purchase of a used truck.
All in favor? Uh, don't like this one. Court to consider the resignation of Patricia Cockles, Skerrit County Precinct Two Commissioner, she has submitted her letter. And I am so honored to have worked with you during the time that you've been here.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate everything that you have done, just to come out of retirement and step into some shoes that, get some grief over.
I noticed that.
I don't want to, but I'll make the motion that we consider the weeks after resignation. And this will be effective June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. All in favor? Thank you so much.
You're so lucky.
It's an honor.
Court to discuss and consider appointment of new LGC board members. Hi, Ella.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. And, and we have various word on this as well, I think you'll remember, volunteered for this.
He did.
By the, by the court. This isn't gonna be here as much, but it's your reporter, it's exciting. I do thank you for letting us be here. For some of you, this project, I know it was originally started by Commissioner Sport, and it's gone on for, for a while. I think we are, believe it or not, maybe have, have some name going for us, but at the same time, we have some board members who either have left our community or will be leaving shortly. So I would just like to know if it would be a possibility for us to approach you next month and ask for, whenever your next meeting, when you're ready for us, to consider appointing some new LGC board members? And also offer that you've got potentially some new commissioners or anybody, if you want a current briefing. Damn, I don't know if you've gotten anything recently as well.
Not recently.
But if you would, if you would want to try to arrange for that for yourself and the commissioners as well.
Okay, all right. So you're not requesting anybody specifically today?
Not at this time, thank you for asking about, we, you know, and we'll probably have an LGC meeting as well soon, and probably have some names too shortly.
Okay, all right, well, we'll put this on the next agenda.
Thank you. Did you hear?
All right, court to consider approval of line-out transfers and budget amendments.
There are no budget amendments, but there are a few line-out transfers. The first one, I'm gonna go ahead and do the airport one, because it, he had to move money for that fifteen thousand to his capital line from his runway maintenance, so that he could purchase by the two thousand fourteen Chevy Silverado from Precinct Four Commissioner. Then the next one was placing the. First one, I think it's missing. Yes. There it is, I'm sorry. Placing the, the capital from airport to capital for four oh one for the commissioner, because it has to be, it's different funds. It has to be placed in the correct funds for tracking purposes. And that's just putting the same fifteen thousand from capital outlay airport to capital outlay precinct for Commissioner Court Line, because it is the Commissioner Court truck. And then for Jeff to purchase the difference, to pay the difference on that truck, which was seventeen thousand and something, but he's also getting a grill guard correct tab on the front of it. So twenty thousand from his road material line in precinct five to his Commissioner Court line. And then this one has nothing to do with any of that. This is precinct two, positive seventeen eighty-eight out of operating supply and lease payment.
I know you picked up stance. Second.
All in favor? Okay, accounts payable?
The total of accounts payable, we're having some accounting issues right now, our system is down, so you'll see that it's written on the bottom here, the Mitch Hall for his truck is added on there, and then the Citibank card. So the total is one million, thirty-seven thousand, four fifty-eight, thirty-five.
Make the motion to play the bills.
Second.
All in favor? I make the motion, we do that.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, appreciate y'all coming in.
Yeah, y'all have to sign that.
Do you take this bond?
Yes, I do that.
If you find out that they're gonna string that or televise it or anything, let us know.
Yeah, we need.
I hope they do something, I just, I don't know what to expect at all. I still don't even know what to expect for the competition yet for the kids, I'm still getting new ones in. And so I hope they do some kind of competing or something, but I don't know. Chefs judge them, like there's a few chefs and restaurants, they say.
A little bit.
I don't know, I don't know if it's brand new and I'm still getting the recognition. I hope we get to see some form of their cooking, you know. I know that I just saw the rules said, in the, they said in the, well, they said the viewing, the viewing area, they said the viewing area. If there's any interaction, they're disqualified. So I'm like, and they're very, and then they're picky on what they wear, and so one team wears the wrong thing, they're disqualified. Yes, and then it has to be certifiable to seafood, and they have to certify, so. It's a lot of rules I'm not used to that I'm trying to wrap my brain around and get ready, get them ready for. But they'll be practicing cooking once they get their recipe, they have, but they have an hour to cook it and five minutes to present.
Maybe they were good to practice.
That way my needs and taste testers, they have to do five plates, so it's not even Food Challenge rules, Food Challenge is impromptu. They don't know what they're gonna get at all, and their presentation is impromptu, but this one's prepared. But it's also about five different things on the plate, five plates, three or four ounces seafood on each plate. So it's, it's totally different, but they have to, they have to plate five plates, four, I guess, for judges. A plate for each judge, and then one for the media to taste them, so. It's a little stressful. But we'll figure it out when we start, so. But we might need some taste testers, because they're gonna have to practice this and play it.
Volunteers.
Okay, okay. Because we're going directly to the town, so I might have.
Y'all start getting rain over there.
Well, it's about that.
The ain't sure ain't raining where I'm at.
Brad Crouch told me once, I've been rags on the under just too. Lord ain't picky.